Good evening, welcome to tonight's town council meeting. Today is Monday, June 19th. It's a little after 7:00 PM. Agenda number one, Pledge of Allegiance, please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the states of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, indivisible, just and just.
Before we move on to Agenda number two, I would like to ask all those here in the audience and also the councilors to, let's take a moment of silence for our colleague, Apple Vecchia, who passed away last week. At this time, Agenda number two, roll call, please.
Councilor O'Clair.
Present.
Councilor Carrasco.
Present.
Councilor Clements.
Present.
Councilor DePietro. Councilor Estrada. Councilor McKenzie.
Here.
Councilor Manah.
Present.
Councilor Steves.
Present.
Sixth present.
Thank you, motion carry, six present to. Agenda number three, consider and accept town council meeting minutes. Councilor DePietro is here?
Yes.
Seven.
So moved.
Second.
Any corrections, changes? Seeing none, simple hand vote, all those in favor? Councilor DePietro, will you abstain or this minutes of last meeting?
Oh, minutes of last meeting, I will certainly approve, yes.
Okay, unanimous of all present, seven zero, thank you. Agenda number four, Subcommittee Reports, A, General Government, Councilor Clements.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, we'll condense these, we had a meeting on Monday, June 12th. There were lots of people in-house, including a large contingent from the fire department. The meeting was called at 6:35 and we took Agenda Items Three and Four first because Mindy Ernst-Funier had to leave early. We discussed property liability and the renewal proposal for MIA and talked about the increase of 6.1% or $31,500 due to increased workers' comp claims. Agenda item number two was to discuss the inquiry on the IOD insurance with MIA for uniformed police and fire officials, that had an increased rate of 5.2% and that although it was an increase, we already had $50,000 allotted, so the $47,508 is well within the budget that has been proposed. Those two items passed to have ratified by council, all in favor, four zero. Agenda item number three, which was the big item, was to review and discuss the updated information presented by members of the fire department in request for new fire rescue truck. That had a lengthy discussion which included presentation of different data that was asked for such as the fleet count, call, trying to mutual aid call information, and basically in numbers on how we could get that number from that fire engine down. So after a lot of conversation between the fire chief and the other officers in-house and all the council members and the reduction of over $40,000 on that truck, it was then highly recommended by all present to submit to council and it is on tonight's agenda for a capital item. The original number was over $465,000 and the new quote is $421,682. And that was, as I said, four zero unanimously recommended to send up to council this evening. Agenda item four was to review transferring $15,000 of land for royalties money to a special account for land for related legal costs and that was proposed due to the fact that there could be potential impending legal action in the form of a lawsuit and we would like to have money put aside for that should that occur. That was highly recommended also to transfer that $15,000, that's on the agenda this evening. We had new business where Councilor Steves brought up the idea of seeking road bonds or Prop 2.5 override to address deteriorating roads in town in the future. There's a lot more research to be done on that and conversation to be held probably in DPW Subcommittee. And that's pretty much it, I'm condensing because we have a 70-item agenda this evening. So the full script is available to you, it will be online posted, it's also been videoed, that will be posted at some point soon by cable. And we adjourned that meeting at 8:45 in the evening, I took the minutes and I thank you for your indulgence.
B, Department of Public Works, Councilor Manah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I don't have any minutes to read and I don't have any meetings planned.
Thank you. C, Education and Human Services, Councilor Steves.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, no minutes and nobody planned.
D, Planning and Development, Councilor O'Clair.
No meetings and no minutes to report.
E, Protection of Persons and Property, Councilor O'Clair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, we, no meetings, minutes, we do have a meeting on Thursday at 6:30 to discuss the, the regional police and fire or centralization within, within the town for the both, for dispatch, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Agenda number five, Chairman's Announcements, I have a few this evening. First of all, I just want to remind the public and I want to say publicly, I want to thank Reverend Peter Joyce who is being relocated after 30 years of service and being here in our community. He is going to be the, serve as the pastor of St. Mary's of Milford. There is a farewell reception in his honor that will take place on Sunday, June 25th at the LaSalle Reception Center from 2:00 to 5:00. It is an open event, you know, we encourage our community to go out and, you know, share some memories with Father Peter Joyce, he's been serving this community for 30 years and he's done it well. He loves this community and it's unfortunate, but they have chosen to move him to St. Mary's in Milford. So that's this Sunday, June 25th, from 2:00 to 5:00 PM. The next thing, I just want to congratulate Counselor-elect Rick Nash and also George Morales on their recent election. And I also want to thank Counselor Estrada for his three years of service to our community and where it's not an easy thing to do, but we've given up a lot of time, a lot of hours to serve this community, so I just want to thank them. Also, I just want to remind the public that this Saturday, starting at 10:00 AM, is the Southbridge Hispanic Parade where we will be celebrating all the Hispanic cultures that are represented here in our community. The parade starts at 10:00 AM and it's following the same parade route of the bicentennial route which will leave from River Street and head down towards the Common. It's going to be an exciting time, there's going to be many different cultures represented, many different ethnic groups, and then there's a festival going on at McMahon Field on Dresser Street. It's a free event, open to the public, there is several, several celebrities that are going to be joining us to be part of this event. So again, I want to encourage the community to come out and enjoy some music, live music, dancing, and of course, the food, there's going to be all types of food down there, so please enjoy it. And then, this is the final town council meeting of this sitting council, so I just want to thank the sitting council and the public for the opportunity that they have given me this past year to serve as the chair. It has not been an easy task, we've had a lot of different issues that have arisen and things that we've tackled, but I just want to thank each counselor and also the public for the opportunity and the town manager for the opportunity to serve as council, to serve as the chair. It's an honor, I take it with a lot of respect and a lot of honor and I just want to say thank you. Let me see, let me see. Final announcement, school is out here in Southbridge, today was the last day, so I just want to remind the pedestrians to slow down, watch children as they are walking, crosswalks, it's very scary sometimes, waiting to try to cross the street, so I just want to remind our citizens to slow down, watch for kids, it's summertime, there's balls that go on the streets, bikes, so let's just slow down a little bit so we can enjoy the summer without any further tragedies. And before I turn it over, and I know we have a lot tonight, but I just want to publicly recognize our Southbridge Police Department and also the Southbridge Fire Department for such a quick response in what we understand to be a random act of violence. This is not something that we need to be alarmed, it's an act of violence that can happen anywhere. This is not just because it's Southbridge, this attack could have happened anywhere. But our police department responded quickly, apprehended the suspect, but also things that probably go unnoticed, our fire department, our paramedics took over their emergency room so then they can take care of that nurse that was injured. And they made sure that it was open to the public, they ran that emergency room, kept it operational for any emergencies that came in, so I just want to congratulate and say thank you to our men and women that serve our community in the fire department and also in the police department. So thank you. That is it for my Chairman's Announcements, moving on to Agenda number six, Town Manager's Announcement, Mr. Sanangelo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I don't want to repeat all that you said because I agree with every word that you said in a variety of different issues. I do want to however, give a personal thank you to Father Peter, he was one of the citizens that first welcomed me to the town and the more you talk to him, it's, you really get one simple thing from him, he's just a good, honest man with so much integrity, you just enjoy talking to him. He loved this community more than anyone else I could, I have ever imagined and I just wanted to thank him for the courtesy he's shown me personally. I also do want to comment about the hospital briefly and the, I had a chance the very next day to meet with the hospital, actually the day of the event, to meet with the hospital administration to discuss issues with them. I was very glad to see the seriousness in which they took the issue, the rallying around one of their own, their heart was on the table as it related to the nurse and her family, was great to see the quick way they reacted, they deserve a lot of credit, they all do a tough job, the men and women who serve this community and give their hearts to the town by providing those medical services, it's just amazing what they do. And also to our police department as well, I had an opportunity to work with Jose during that time and he took over the leadership in the chief's absence and he did a great job in leading his team and making sure that the police department gave every bit of support to the hospital as well. The police department also was there, I mean, it was really just a great team effort on all parts and it shows really what's best about Southbridge is that all people in all organizations in a time of crisis come together and really make a difference in this community, we should be proud of that whole team. And that's all I have tonight, Mr. Chairman. Oh wait, one other, one other announcement, we, one of the things that citizens will see as they go around different parts of the town, there's six new anti-drug message banners scattered out throughout town, we put a couple up at Henry Street and one at, there's one at West Street School, another one at Charlton Street School, there's going to be another one at the library, we're circling around, I want to thank the police department for giving us a couple of hundred dollars and Bay Path for actually doing the six banners at very, very little cost. So thank you to Bay Path, we really want to send a message and I think everyone knows about the opioid crisis all throughout the, our country, we really need to send a message, particularly to the children's community about the dangers of drugs and alcohol, if you never get involved, you don't have to worry about it, it's those people that are suffering with addiction that we're seeing overdosing and just way too often seeing people die as a result, so to the parents out there watching this, spend some time talking to your children, sending a strong message to them about just how dangerous this stuff on the streets is, it literally is killing our citizens across this country and it's scary, it just seems to be growing leaps and bounds and we need to take some action, so we're doing the best we can, but it's up to everybody, we can't do it individually, it's got to be an effort by every person in this community. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Agenda number seven, Swearing In and Presentation, there is none this evening. Agenda number eight, Citizens Forum, are there any citizens that would like to address the council with something that is not on tonight's agenda? Please state your name, address, you'll have five minutes and keep it respectful.
Good evening, Kevin Buxton, 28 Columbus Avenue. I would be remiss if I didn't say something on the final seating of this council and I've appreciate, I've always appreciated the efforts put in by all councils to, I know it's a tough and hard path to follow with the amount of our meetings and Subcommittee meetings and the efforts you put in are highly appreciated by, I know myself and, and I think most people realize that you have a tough job before you and you do it with as much respect and respectfulness as citizens show you. I'd like to also thank the citizens for coming out and the turnout for the vote, I think it's, it's always good to see a good turnout, we sometimes see national elections drawing more attention than local despite the fact that everybody is pretty well aware that your local administration can have a far more impact on your life than the federal government does. The turnout was good to see, it was a beautiful day and I must admit, in all my years of talking with councilors and working with the town government, that was my, first time I had really attended a curbside program, campaign, maybe, it probably won't be my last, I think it was a, it's nice to see enthusiasm towards not just a particular item, but all ballot questions as well as candidates and it just fills you with pride to know that people will go out there and spend sometimes some extraordinary weather to show their enthusiasm to voters. I always had to comment that as I walked up Chestnut Street that I don't make my mind up in the last 150 feet, but it made me realize that within that 100, before you get to that 150 feet, you have to respect the people that put their time and effort in to show their enthusiasm for different candidates, different questions. It's a good, it's a good showing to the voters that these, these matters matter and we should be showing our care and concern when making decisions. As, as far as the new council is coming in, I, I always express myself that of the three councilors, I'd like to see at least one new one. I'd like to add the appreciation to Councilor Estrada for his three-year term. In this election, we're going to see two councilors, two new councilors. I've seen a lot of councils, I started back in 96 when it was 13 suits and ties sitting up there of gentlemen that you did not want to get on the wrong side of. It was a stronger, bolder counselor in the 90s and, and I'm glad to say that over the last couple of councilors, over the last couple of council cycles, I've seen the council change, I've seen the council turn more respectful, respectful of citizens' thoughts and desires to see Southbridge change. Sometimes change is hard, sometimes change is good, but in previous councils as well as this one, I think it's important that citizens do see a friendlier council, a council that's looking forward to a cleaner, healthier environment for future generations. It's important that you be approachable and I've never had a problem with that and I can only hope that the future councils will continue that progress to open and increase influence from the public and drawing more citizens into, to help in various subcommittees and different events. I thank you again for your service and I'll see you next meeting, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buxton. Are there any other citizens that I'd like to address the council? Please state your name, address, you'll have five minutes, please keep it respectful.
Hello, my name is Paul Zeros, I live at 60 Charlton Street in Southbridge, Massachusetts. How's everybody tonight, it's a little hot up here. Before I begin, I want to say hi to my friend George Poole, he's broke his hip about a month ago, he's healing and I'd like to give him a shout out, he's got a lot of friends in Southbridge, I'd like people to say wish him luck and hope he, hope he mends his hip and he's back riding around on all the sidewalks that he built here in Southbridge, you know, he built quite a few of them. Today I took him for a walk on the one by Charlton Street School, all the way up the hill, he built that sidewalk all by himself, you know, he's a pretty, pretty great guy, so hopefully he can walk on the sidewalks again. Anyway, back to the subject at hand, I'd like to thank the voters of Southbridge for voting to stop this landfill. I don't know if you've heard the news, but the citizens of Southbridge voted no, and I think it was the highest vote getter, higher than any counselor, pretty nice to see. People of Southbridge have always been attuned to what's wrong up there, they've just been afraid. And tonight, I'm letting everybody know that you can't run this town on fear, you cannot run this town on fear. We got a great town manager, he's strong, the minute I met him, he said we can live without Casella and he was right, I love this guy, alright? I've seen quite a few managers in my day, I've become best friends with seven managers, even the one that after seven years didn't like me, but I consider me, I consider him a friend because we worked, we did a lot of things in seven years, so I know a lot of managers. And Ron, Ron's budgets are the easiest for the average person to understand, you know, because I kind of get a grip on what's going on with a budget, I've seen him explain two of them and I'm getting smarter, you know, so I really like that. And the councilors are representatives, we don't, we don't elect nine managers, there's only one manager and there's nine representatives, tonight there's seven, but you represent the people. The council voted six to two, no, and now the town voted 1,300-something to 800-something, so the people don't want this landfill and you guys represented them. So my question to all of you, including the town manager, and I'd like to go right to left, I'd like to ask a question, how do you feel about the vote that we took, do you respect the people's vote of no? And I'd like to know individually, what are your plans to close the landfill? Do you have any plans? Does anybody up here have any plans? And one by one, I don't think I have to ask everybody, but we can start with Monique and I'd like to know, Monique, do you have any plans to close the landfill and what they are?
I refuse to debate with this citizen.
It's not a debate.
Thank you.
Okay, you don't have to, I just wanted to know if you had any plans. Mr. DePietro, do you have, what are your plans to close?
Mr. Zodos, we're not doing this, we, we have a long agenda item.
You do?
70 items tonight, if, if you want to, you, you can approach us individually.
Well, have you, we're all here now, it's 82 degrees, I asked a question.
I'd rather not use this, this time.
Can I ask the manager then, what are your, what are the steps and what are your plans?
At this time, this is not the time and place for that.
You're kidding, you're kidding me? Are you kidding?
I'm, I am not kidding.
You, you, I can't ask a question?
You've asked your questions and, and I would urge all councilors to get Mr. Zodos information, whether you want to call him or email him or reach out to him, but unfortunately, I am not going to use this time to debate or go through this.
You want to use, this is the people's time, this wasn't your time, this is the people's time that I have, now you wasted my time. I walked up here in the rain, 82 degrees to speak to you and if you want, if you're afraid to say what your plans are, then just say, "I'm afraid, I don't have any plans", why don't you say that? That's what you, that's what, that's what's true, it's not funny, Gus, what are your plans, Gus? Do you have any plans for closing the landfill? What are the steps?
We have order, Mr. Chair, please.
What do we do first?
Mr. Zodos, Mr. Zodos, we're not doing this any longer. Do you have anything else that you would like to address the council with, something that's not on the agenda?
Well, it's three, I got a thousand things we could fix and do and talk about, but I guess we don't have time for anything except appointing your friends for three years. Why don't you let the new council appoint people? Why are you gonna, why are you gonna saddle new councilors with old ideas? That's your, that's your agenda tonight, to saddle, to saddle people that, new councilors that won't have any say on who makes these appointments? Why don't you wait and let the new councilors appoint people? That's what we always did for 200 years, it worked, you know? Anyway, do I still have time, I can keep talking.
No, you've run out.
I've run out?
Yes.
Well, you voted against me last time and now you shut me down, you're afraid to answer a question. I'm going to ask the manager again, during, during managers' announcements or council's forum, could you please state your plans? The people have spoken and if you don't have any plans to close the landfill, then you don't represent the people, alright? You do not.
Thank you, Mr. Zodos.
And if you want to close that landfill, the people spoke many, many times, especially to me.
Thank you, Mr. Zodos.
I can't walk down the street.
Thank you, Mr. Zodos.
But there's nothing more important than the landfill.
Thank you, Mr. Zodos.
Chairman, there's nothing more important.
Thank you, Mr. Zodos.
But everybody's afraid to speak except Paul Zodos, I'll go and write a song about it.
Thank you, Mr. Zodos.
By the way, nice mic.
Are there any other citizens that would like to address the council with something that's not on tonight's agenda? Are there any other citizens that would like to address the council with something that's not on tonight's agenda? Are there any other citizens that would like to address the council with something that's not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we will move on to Agenda number nine, Counselors' Forum, and we will start with Counselor Manah.
Well, I guess my first thing, Mr. Chair, is, is this because we have 70 some items on the agenda, is that why that's not happening?
That's one of the reasons.
Okay, thank you. I do have a few things, I would like to, as a town manager, could you please get me a report on the scholarship funding that we have and how the scholarships are being distributed and, because I know we have some significant money that comes in yearly for these and I just, I don't see a report, so if you could get me something on that, I would greatly appreciate it. And then my second thing is for the master general laws on smoking at public buildings, could you please like post a sign outside of our doorways because there's a certain amount of feet that you're supposed to be away from the doors and I don't think that's happening here. Thirdly, I'd like to congratulate Counselor Steves on your reelection, Counselor-elect Rick Nash and Counselor-elect Jorge Morales. I would also like to thank Miguel Estrada for the three years that he's served on the council and gave to the community. And let me see, I think I had a couple other things. Yes, I would like to thank also the fire department and the police department and everyone who responded to the incident up at Harrington Hospital and I wish nothing but the best for the, the nurse that was attacked and her family, I, I think of them often and I said prayers. Also, there was, yes, election, we did have a really good turnout, thank you to all the citizens that came out. I'm going to say this publicly, I was not getting involved on question number one here as a town counselor, however, on Election Day, everybody's minds were made up, so I decided to go and express my right to free speech and that's what I did. So we have question number one, that did not pass, and we have questions two through five that did pass, so that kind of surprised me. And that's it, I think we had like an 18.8 or higher percent turnout, it was, it was a really good turnout, it was a nice day and I really truly believe by moving the election up the way we did, we had a better turnout too because more people were still at home. So, that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor DePietro.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Incidentally, again, I, I am very pleased at how you handle everyone at this podium, you give everyone an equal opportunity. You give everyone an equal opportunity. When things get out of hand, I think you quell the situation quite well. This particular item has been in contention for some time. I think the people have spoken to address the councilors individually at this forum. I think you're quite correct and we certainly can't do that and certainly not under your, your leadership here. I'm sure by email or even a phone call, I mean, we're all available, but this certainly isn't a forum to hash out. Certainly not with seventy-three agenda items in front of us. But point taken, the people have spoken. And that doesn't, that doesn't rest lightly with this council, myself included. Secondly, I would like to recommend to our incoming councillors, number one, congratulations. Number two, I hope they would take more advantage than I did in, from day one of talking to senior councilors and getting, I believe Counselor Nash, or soon to be Counselor Nash, is having gone to subcommittees and so forth, all about it. But our other councillors incoming will probably be walking in a little blind, as I was, and didn't understand the whole procedural aspects and and point of order with the chair and all that. I learned that as I went. And that was a mistake and I really should have talked to some senior members of this council. I learned as I went. And you'll find, you're going to be working with some tremendous people. Different points of view, obviously, but certainly all folks you can work with. So take advantage of their expertise, as I certainly have. And I'm learning as I go. And it took me quite some time to feel as though I'm even adding to the subcommittees and to council. And I'm pleased to be here. I'm in, I'm here to represent the people. None of us are here for the money, that's for damn sure. And I'm just happy to represent the town and look forward to doing so for the next two years. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilor Steves?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. First off, I want to say thank you to everybody who voted, whether you voted for me or not. I'm glad to see that there was an excellent turnout and that we can, regardless of how we stand regarding any particular ballot question or any particular candidate, we can always come together and participate as a community. And I think that's a really good showing, whether it be at the ballot box or even, say, on the end of Chestnut Street there, which is a good kind of a community event. And that's always fun. Also, I'm actually going to answer Paul's question. But I'll be honest with you, I don't know. But that's going to be a high, that's going to be an immediate high priority for the next year. Because if the landfill's going to close in May, we need to have something that's upset, need something set up to, to deal with it. It's a much longer thing than just one issue. It's a whole, there's a whole raft of issues that are surrounding it that we all need to think about. So that's going to require some citizen input, it's going to require council input, it's going to require other boards' input. This is, this is not an easy project. But we really started thinking about it. And that's all I have at the moment.
Thank you. Councilor McKenzie?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. As you may be aware, or you may not be aware, we now have in our town a homeless shelter. And I've been asked to inform people about the homeless shelter. It's called St. Luke's Guest House. It's located on 141 Main Street in Southbridge. It's the only homeless shelter in Southern Worcester County. Previously, the space was a daycare center for the Southbridge Interface Hospitality Network. It began as a private effort of, in 2013. And quietly, the guest house has remained a capacity, remained at capacity, frequently having to turn people away. St. Luke's Guest House now has enlarged itself, it's remodeled. And it is also a charitable institution and it works on donations. They get no government funding. Tax deductible contributions. I'm not, well, I'm not going to get into the tax deductible concept because I just want to do that. But I would sincerely invite people to find out more about the St. Luke's Guest House homeless shelter. It's a very, very important thing and our town, Southbridge, has it. So I also would like to congratulate our two new councilors, Rick Nash and Jorge Morales. And I also want to thank Miguel Estrada for the past three years of dedicated service that he did perform. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilor O'Clair?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, I will, I'm just going to quickly echo the thoughts of all of the other councillors. Congratulations to Councilor-elect Morales and Councilor-elect Nash. And thank you to Councilor Estrada for his three years of service. I also want to take that opportunity to point out that we're going to need some citizen members on our subcommittees, especially with, with Councilor-elect Nash not going to be sitting in that role anymore in a couple of them. So please, fill out a, fill out a form if you're interested in getting involved. It's a great way to get your feet wet in local politics. If you have an inkling that you, you know, might want to run for council or school committee someday and you don't know how to get started, subcommittees are a really great way to do that. Today was the last day of school. I saw some really great videos on Facebook of all of the teachers sending the children off. I thought that it was really nice, a really nice touch. And, you know, I'm just, I'm proud to, you know, represent this community with, with the people in it and the, and the, you know, employees of our school and everybody else who cares so much. And it was, it was a really nice thing to say, to see. And thank you to everyone that came out and voted. It was eighteen point eight percent. Twenty-one hundred people, or over twenty-one hundred people came out, which is, you know, a great turnout. Love to see that every year even more. So thank you to that. Thank you to everybody who was involved in the, the Committee Against the Landfill Expansion. It was really humbling to be a part of a group, a group that was coming together for the, you know, benefit of Southbridge. And I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Clements?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to thank the Bicentennial Committee. I was privileged to be at their time capsule bearing on Saturday and placed a banner on the capsule, screwed a few screws and shoveled a lot of dirt. But I believe it's probably one of their last official duties, was to get that time capsule planted in a place that we will remember, in Dresser Park. It will be, as it's been said before, noted with a monument, a small placard and granite stone. So we'll all be able to know exactly where that time capsule is buried. It was great to see the committee out there and Steve Brady and Councilor Steves and the others doing their final deed for the bicentennial. And hopefully in fifty years, we'll, or for those who will do it, it'll be pretty exciting to open up and see what great artifacts they left. Also, the DPW for digging that hole. Thanks, DPW, for getting the hole dug. It was a bit large and you left a big pile of dirt, but we only filled it halfway up. So I'm assuming you filled the rest of it. That was, that was fun. Anyway, I also congratulate my colleague, Councilor Steves, for his reelection and, and of course, a wonderful citizen member, Rick Nash, who is now our council-elect, and newbie Jorge Morales. I tell all of you, as advice from my own perspective eight years ago, follow the rules. Read the rules. We are, we follow parliamentary procedure here, as it was pointed out to me in my very first debate by Mistress Ottilie. Rules of order, that's parliamentary procedure. If you're not familiar with it, get familiar with it. That's your job now to represent the people and to be part of a meeting and understand it. There's a great condensed version and I encourage you to try to understand parliamentary procedure as Butch McDonald, Larry McDonald and others that I also learned from would appreciate you doing in the name of good government. And of course, council rules and regs, our charter, which is very important. And certainly bylaws come in handy every once in a while. You just, you think you don't know the answer to a question and it's right there, it's right in front of you in the bylaws. So take the time, invest for this community the way they invested in you at their vote. Make them proud. And I look forward to working with all of you in my next year. Let's see, other than that, just thank you to everybody for all that they do continuously in this community, especially our services. And I think we are very lucky in this community to have what we have. And we should embrace that, support that, talk good about it. We live in a great place and we should respect that. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Agenda number ten. Vote to confirm the reappointment of Anna Smith as landfill monitor for a three-year term effective July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2020.
So moved.
Mr. Chairman, for, I'll second for the moment, for the moment. Just to make it simpler, could we, could we take all of the three-year appointments and vote them together?
Unfortunately, we cannot, because I have to mention the positions. So if I mention the position of several, then like council, moving forward, you see Commission of Disabilities, I can say multiple names to the Commission of Disabilities and that will move things quicker.
Okay.
Okay. Councilor O'Clair?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was actually approached by several citizens that wanted to see, or until landfill monitor services are no longer needed on the end of that, because they feel as though a three-year term would be sticking us into a three-year with the landfill monitor.
Mr. Term Manager?
I'm sorry.
While the term is three years, if the landfill closes prior to that, the term will end at the time of the landfill closure when that person's not needed. So while the term goes that long, that doesn't mean the person would actually get to fill out that term if for some reason they're no longer needed.
Okay.
Okay. Any further discussion? We're going to go hand votes. All those in favor?
No, I'm voting.
Okay. All those in favor? Seven. Unanimous by all present. Agenda number eleven, vote to confirm the reappointment of Margaret Marisi as library director for a three-year term effective July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? She does a great job. All those in favor? Seven zero.
Actually, I do have a quick question on that one. Why is that, why is that a three-year term? Why is that not, like other, like other jobs?
I believe-
I mean, she's an employee, she's not an appointee.
I believe this is similar to the animal control officer position. It has to be, it has to be bylaw so she can be recognized through the mass association of public libraries, I can believe. That's what I, but I will, I will look into that further. Motion carries, that was seven zero. Agenda number twelve, vote to confirm the reappointment of Paul Tietro to the Airport Commission for a three-year term effective July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Seven zero, unanimous. Agenda number thirteen, vote to confirm the reappointment of David Williams to the Board of Health for a three-year term effective July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Unanimous, seven zero. Agenda number fourteen, vote to confirm the reappointment of Thomas A. U. Junior to the Cable Advisory Committee for a three-year term effective July 1st, 2017 through-
So moved.
June 30th, 2020.
Second.
All, any discussion? All those in favor? Seven zero, motion carries. Agenda number fifteen, vote to confirm the reappointment of Michael Mumvee to the Commission of Disabilities for a year, three-year term effective July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous by all present, seven zero. Agenda number sixteen, vote to confirm the reappointment of Kenneth Pickering to the Conservation Commission for a three-year term effective immediately, effective July, excuse me, July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Question?
Questions?
I had something I wanted to say.
Councilor Steves?
I hate to do this, but I'm going to have to say no on this one because he has been using conservation as if it were an economic development board for years now. I said, I'm, I'm going to have to actually say no on this one because unfortunately, Ken's been using conservation as if it's an economic development board for years now. And I can't support that anymore.
Any other discussion? Councilor Clements?
Thank you. I'm not sure Councilor Steve's reasoning officially, you know, that's his, for me personally, I think Ken has always approached and, and seems to be very committed to what he's doing. So I don't see anybody else jumping up for the position and he's certainly very dedicated to it, so.
Councilor Manna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I agree with Councilwoman Clements. You know, I know Ken Pickering through the town and he's been very, like, he's there. He's voluntary for this. I haven't heard any complaints or anything about him. He has my full support. Thank you.
Councilor DePetro?
I find it quite frankly amazing you can't work with Ken.
I have nothing against Ken personally. As I said, I have nothing against him. I think he doesn't, he's been there for a very long time. Okay? And I have an issue, my issue is the fact that as I've seen it over the last couple of years, it's becoming more and more apparent that he's not including all of the Conservation Commission members on site, site visits. He's not, there are issues with coming forward with, it, it looks to me like he is using it as, as an economic development board. He brings arguments to support things or oppose things based on financial issues rather than, rather than ecological issues. And it's not something, this is not something I wanted to do. But I've been thinking about it and I've been watching it for a while. And honestly, I think he's been there too long.
Councilor DePetro, you still have the floor?
If I may, Councilor, if, and again, I have worked, I've worked with Gus, excuse me, I've worked with, with Ken for years. But certainly not on these committees. Again, I'm surprised that you have this issue, but if you couldn't recommend anyone more credible or-
At the moment, I don't know. We need to see who's-
More worthy of the position. I would have to, I would have to concur with with vote for appointment.
Thank you. Councilor Manna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. And I, I don't want this to sound like, I don't know, I don't know how I want it to sound, but I do know that you know somebody personally that's on the Conservation Commission and maybe there's some issues. And maybe perhaps you should take a step back.
If I may, we're not going to debate before, that he made a statement in regards to-
And I'm making a statement as well. And I'm making a statement as well. And I have a concern because if there's a conflict there, maybe he should just take a step back and not vote yes or no, just accuse himself.
All he's saying, he's not voting, Counselor Manor. He said he's not supporting this appointment.
That's, that's the way I took it, so.
Counselor Manor, I know everybody in the Conservation Commission.
We're-
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I am done with the floor. Thank you.
Counselor O'Clough.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I've also, I've also heard some concerns about that very thing. I also was pointed to a video where some questionable things were said, you know, earlier today and, and I have to echo Counselor Steve's concerns on this. I will also say that it's, it's extremely difficult as a citizen to the town. I would, you know, I would assume, you know, with ConCom positions with Board of Health to remove yourself from any of the economic impacts. And it's important that we're putting people in those roles that it can, that can, that can, you know, effectively do that. And so that's, that's my take on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this? It's going to be another hand vote. All those in favor?
Mr. Chair, I did not have the, you know.
This is, there is a, all those in favor of this reappointment?
Agenda item 16.
Five. All those opposed? Two. Motion carries, five two. Agenda item number 17 and 18 will be combined. Vote to confirm the reappointment of Kenneth Pickering and Brian Wilson to the Southbridge Trails Committee for a three-year term effective July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on this agenda item? Counselor Steve.
I just want to point out that, as I said, that this is not personal about Ken because I have no problem with him being on the Trails Commission. He is definitely dedicated to doing Trails work. And I have seen that. He does a lot of good stuff with that. I have no problem with him being there.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous, seven zero on both appointments. Agenda number 19, vote, vote to confirm the reappointment of Alan R. Jeskey, a constable for a three-year term effective July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Unanimous, seven zero.
Agenda, Agenda item numbers 20, 21, and 22 will all be combined. Vote to confirm
the reappointment of Virginia Rappel, Theodore Bartlett, and Darlene Calleza to the Council of Aging for a three-year term effective July 1st, 2017 through June 20, excuse me, June 30th, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on these three appointments? Seeing none. All those in favor? Seven zero on all three appointments. Motion carries. Agenda 23 and 24 will be together again. Vote to confirm the reappointment of William Jolen and Amanda Richards to the Historical Commission for a three-year term effective July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2020.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Motion carries, seven zero. 25 and 26 will also be combined. Vote to confirm the reappointment of Richard Whitney to the, and Jessica Jimenez to the Library Board of Trustees for a three-year term effective July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous, seven zero. Motion carries. Agenda item number 27 and 28 will be combined. Vote to confirm the reappointment of Joshua Brackett as a, and Gil Provost as a call firefighter for a three-year term effective July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous by all present, seven zero. Agenda item number 29, vote to confirm the reappointment of Keith Nichols as a lieutenant call firefighter for a three-year term effective July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2020.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Seven zero. Motion carries. Agenda item 30 and 31 will be combined. Vote to confirm the reappointment of Michael Daniels and Bruce Newlands to the Liquor Licensing Board for a three-year term effective July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2020.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
Just one, just one-
Counselor Steve.
Mr. Newland's name doesn't have a K in it.
What?
Mr. Newland's name does not have a K in it. Just, just for the sake of spelling. Mr. Newland's name does not have a K in it.
There is no K.
It doesn't mine. Bruce KN. It's just N.
There's no K in mine.
There's no K in mine.
Mine has a K. Mine has a K. I don't know why yours doesn't. It's that supposed to.
Okay.
Okay, good.
Bruce Newland.
We've got two different versions here.
N-E-W-L-A-N-D-S. Thank you. Any, any further discussion? All those in favor? Seven zero. Motion carries. Agenda item number 32, 33 will be combined unless someone would like to separate. Vote to confirm the reappointment of Lawrence Spanelli and Cassandra Ackley to the Planning Board for a three-year term effective July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2020.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Seven zero. Motion carries. Agenda number 34, vote to confirm the reappointment of Darryl Farron to the Traffic Commission for a three-year term effective July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Seven zero. Motion carries. Agenda item number 35, 36, 37, and 38 will all be combined unless someone so chooses to separate. Vote to confirm the reappointment of Ryan Sweeney, John Calcagni, Javier Rivera, and Josiah Messina as a police auxiliary for a three-year term effective, effective July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Seven zero. Motion carries. Agenda item number 39, vote to confirm the reappointment of Robert G. Caprera, Esquire as Town Council for a one-year term effective July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2018.
So moved.
Thirty, June 30th, excuse me, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Seven zero. Motion carries. Agenda number 40, vote to confirm the reappointment of Merrick O'Connell, Attorneys at Law, as Special Counsel for a one-year term effective July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Seven zero. Motion carries. Agenda number 41, vote to confirm the reappointment of Mead Tallerman and Costa, Attorneys at Law, as Special Counsel for a one-year term effective July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Counselor Steve.
I just have a quick question. When did we actually vote to appoint them as, as Town, as Special Town Council?
It was last year, I believe.
Because I, I know I've seen some paperwork, stuff like that, but I don't remember them actually coming forward to be appointed as Town Council.
Mr. Town Manager.
I'm not sure that. The only, the only thing they've ever been used for is Liquor Control Commission. As you recall, the attorney that was representing us before the Liquor Control Commission, personal, personal issues had to leave and they were representing, they were assigned to represent us just for that issue. I don't know if that was brought before the council or not. It was some time ago.
Yeah, I, I remember the other guy, Joyce.
I think it might have been like one case. I don't think they, they've been here almost next to nothing so far. So very little.
What was that?
It's not, that name.
Counselor Clements.
No, I'm just saying it, it was not brought forward and we always have attorneys brought forward to us to ratify their appointments.
I don't remember, through you, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I don't, quite frankly, remember them doing anything for us. I'm thinking about it. I don't know if they've done any work for the town at this point. They were used years ago prior to me coming in to do liquor licensing. One of the guys, Adam Costa, was working for the Liquor Control Commission back then. But I don't know that since I've been here, they've done any legal work as of yet. But the reason I know they're on here is because they want them back for the Liquor Control Commission for those cases.
Counselor O'Clough.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just as a comment that, you know, Attorney Costa's been with the town well before Ron ever got here, well before I was ever on the board. I believe that he actually, he, he presided over when Town Manager Clark was going after the pocket licenses. He was the attorney that they was, that they were using back then.
Ms. Chairman, if I could, one comment. I'll only say this. I haven't worked with Costa so much as I've worked with, with Tallerman. And quite frankly, he's one of the best attorneys I've ever worked with, from my opinion. And frankly, it'd probably be good to have him on here because if there's ever a conflict of interest in Merrick O'Connell, they're that kind of a law firm. We could use him if we need to. But as of right now, we have no plans for using them for anything other than liquor control.
Counselor McKenzie.
Yes. Is there any financial payment to these? In other words, they would just be kind of dangling in the air and we'll pull them down as a balloon when we need them?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, all our attorneys are paid by an hourly rate. This is the way it's usually done. So we would call them, if we needed them, they would be done by an hourly rate and they would be, depending upon the hours they were needed for the Liquor Control Commission.
Right. But there would be no payment if we didn't need them.
Zero unless they do work.
So, sounds fine.
Any further discussion on Agenda item 41? Seeing none. All those in favor? Unanimous by all present, seven zero. I'm going to take Agenda item number 42 and 44 together as they go together. So it's vote to confirm the reappointment of Arnold Lonnie and A.J. Lacharelle to the Education Fund Committee for a one-year term effective July 1st through June 30th, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Seven zero. Agenda item number 43 and 45 will go together. Vote to confirm the reappointment of Arnold Lonnie and A.J. Lacharelle to the Scholarship Committee for a one-year term effective July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Seven zero. Unanimous by all present. Motion Agenda item number 46, vote to confirm the reappointment of Detective Evan Genkels to the Commission of Disabilities for a one-year term effective July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Seven zero. Thank you. Agenda number 47, vote to confirm the reappointment of Evelyn Rivera as Municipal Hearing Officer for a one-year term effective July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2018.
So moved.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, it's July 1st, 2017. You said 2018.
Excuse me. July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous by all present, seven zero. Agenda item number 48, vote to confirm the reappointment of Ning Lam as parking ticket clerk for a one-year term effective July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2018.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Seven zero. Motion carries. Agenda item number 49, vote to confirm the reappointment of Michael Trombley as Graves, Graves Officer for a one-year term effective July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2018.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous by all present. That concludes all of our reappointments. Now, Agenda item number 50, vote to ratify the property and liability insurance proposal renewal from M.A. Maya for a fiscal year 2018 at an increased rate of 6.1% or approximately $31,500 per year.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Simple handful. All those in favor? Seven zero. Agenda number 51, vote to ratify injured on duty IOD insurance with Maya for uniformed police and fire officials at the premium increase rate of 5.2% per year.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Seven zero. Unanimous by all those present. Agenda item number 52, vote to transfer $15,000 from Landfill Royalties Account 6790 to special article landfill legal fees to pay for landfill-related legal costs.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Unanimous, seven zero. Motion carries. Vote, Agenda item number 53, vote to transfer $190,000 from Landfill Royalties Account Number 6790 to a special article for the purchase of four trailers of 64-gallon waste toters and one trailer of 96-gallon recycle containers.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Any counselors? Counselor O'Clough?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I just wanted to point out to anybody that's maybe watching at home and seeing a big number. Okay. Just wanted to point out that I believe this, or I guess maybe ask and point out, this is money that's specifically allotted to recycling efforts, correct?
No. We're going to allow-
I'm sorry. This is in the General Royalties account. There's a separate account for recycling. That's not this account.
Okay. So this is just a capital, capital item. All right.
Counselor Steve.
I remember that when we were discussing at GenGov, we were, we had asked Andy to get us some extra information. And unfortunately, I'm drawing a blank on what it was because unfortunately I forgot to bring my note with me. But were you able to get it?
Yes.
I know it's big.
Stand back a little bit.
Okay. Is that, is this a little better?
Yes.
Okay, good. I remember at GenGov, we had talked about it and we were, we asked Andy to get some extra information about this. Unfortunately, I couldn't find my notes before I came in today. Do you remember what that was?
Wait, the agenda?
When we were talking about this item.
Yes.
We had wanted Andy to get extra information on it.
Who are you addressing?
Oh, yes, yes.
I'm drawing a blank on a question on what it was. I am actually, sorry.
If I may, through you, Mr. Chair.
Counselor Clements.
Yes. At the, at the general government meeting, we discussed this for a long time, twice. And what we were looking for was the information as to how much it would cost to distribute potentially, or how you planned on getting the distribution done-
Right.
-all at once or within a very close timeframe for the entire community. Because we talked about purchasing part of these versus all at once or portion at a time. And you were very much under the desire to get it done all at once so that we could distribute all at once. But there was no actual numbers involved as to how much that might cost us. You felt you had the money.
And I'm going to beg forgiveness. I was called away to a family issue for two weeks. So I did not investigate into that. But I know we did talk deeply into, if we did it in two sets, we would actually probably incur more costs because of two mobilization costs. I have started investigating. We're going to probably reach out to some of the, some of the, I don't know how to say this, but the services employees in the town, the Center of Hope-type people, to see if we can get them to help build it for us. You had mentioned at the meeting that you might have an idea for helping on the construction costs. I'm sure you were probably thinking the Sheriff's Department or something along those lines. But then we would be using a distribution company to come in and distribute them all at once. The ones we have out there, we have about 50% of the town supplied already. The ones we have out there, we have a record of where they are. Eric, my assistant, will develop a list of the places where we haven't delivered to yet. And we will get that to a distribution company and have them do it for us. And we have monies in the account. We have $35,000 in the account to accomplish that.
Does that work for you, Counselor Steve? That was, okay. Thank you.
Mr. Buxton?
Yes, Kevin Buxton, 28 Columbus Avenue. I did voice my opinion at the last meeting. I realize this project is well in advance of my speaking on the subject. Over the years, I have discussed it with Andy in the past. And in the last week or so, I did email him and received some response back. There's still, I still have some questions. And my first question might be, I believe the last time this came before council, wasn't it $160,000?
No, the 190 has been.
190 has been. All right. Like I said, I have contacted Andy. I know this, at this point in the process, Andy knows I'm a very progressive person when it comes to curbside recycling. And I've always wanted to see more effort be made to get citizens to recycle more. My concerns with this program is, is in that vein that in one respect, this program, as long as you're going to continue having residents sign for the toters, the documentation that you supply to request a total, is that still going to be implemented?
Because the Board of Health has asked me to look into drafting some solid waste regulations. And the solid waste regulations will mandate a unlimited disposal, but only 65 gallons of it will be able to be waste. The rest would have to be recycling. Because we're going to mandate that this program be put in place, not mandate our toters. If you don't want our toters, they can be returned and you can buy your own at Home Depot for significantly more money. But the new reg that I am proposing, and this council will get a copy of those before we adopt them, so that they can have input into, before the board votes on it, will be that we will limit the amount of waste, the amount of disposal to no more than 65 gallons. The rest would end up being recycling in whatever quantity you wanted to give out.
Like I said, this is not Andy and I's first time of going around about total situation. And in fact, I, the documentation that's presently used for- And in fact, I, the documentation that's presently used for people to be issued these toters, if you read the fine print, residents are taking, are signing the fact that they're going to follow more strict rules and regulations than our standard bylaws is, pertains to. So in that respect, the toter program with a resident's signature is actually more enforceable than our own bylaws. So I don't have a problem with that. As we've gone over before about the costs of these toters, yes, a lot of residents may see it as a free toter the first time, but they need to read that fine print because if the toter needs to be replaced afterwards, there is going to be costs implied by the citizens. Like I said, at this point, I don't fault anybody for voting in favor of this, but I will stay abreast of this program and how it proceeds, and does it actually encourage recycling, or is it just a free toter? And, no, nothing else.
Thank you. Counselor Manna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. To Mr. Pelletier. Mr. Pelletier, I know there are smaller toters, too. Do you still have some available for those residents who may need them?
We do.
Instead of the 65-gallon?
We have probably a couple of hundred behind the DPW barn that we ordered for those people who couldn't handle the larger toter. If I had my way, I would have gone to a 35-gallon toter right out of the gate for everybody. That would really encourage recycling, but I do have some 35s.
Do you have a significant amount of people who already have the 35-gallon toters from the town?
I don't believe we have more than 30 of them out there.
Just the only 30 of them?
We offer them by request.
Because I know there's a couple of my neighbors that have the smaller toters, so I was just curious. I think that would encourage recycling more.
I would have loved to go to a 35-gallon across the board. We offer the 35 to those who feel they need it or feel they can work within a 35-gallon, but we are going to ask that the trash be contained to that one container. So think carefully before you request a 35.
I like this program, and I really hope a lot of people get on board with it because I think it's, it's cleaner, and it helps our environment by reducing waste.
Our goals in this thing were to improve recycling, as I mentioned before, and once we can put it in place across the board, we can use enforcement on it to encourage people to use the container and don't exceed the container. The second phase, or second action we were hoping to get out of this was to improve the blight. This board has not been silent on wanting to get the blight in town addressed, and I think the trash at curbside is a significant part of it. So I think we've made vast improvements in that. If you, if you check some of the streets, they have a lot of these containers.
I, I'm in support of this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Steves?
Andy, I had two quick questions. One is, do you know what the recycling rate is now, roughly?
Recycling rate is floating anywhere between 21 and 24%.
Okay. And also, do you have a rough timeframe for when the Board of Health is actually likely to have hearings on these regulations you were just talking about?
I was sidetracked because one of my board members took offense at the, at the donation boxes that are constantly overflowing and rodent-infested. So I just drafted up a regulation for donation boxes that the board's gonna look at. I have one section, two sections. I have the holler regs. I'm trying to do a comprehensive regulation, commercial disposal, residential disposal, and holler regs. So what I have remaining on the draft is, I gotta draft the holler regs, and I have to draft the administration part of it. And then I'll present it to the board for review, then this council for input, and then back to my board for a hearing and a vote.
So are you thinking sometime like September, maybe?
I'm gonna say within the next two to two and a half months, I should have the, I should have the regulations for solid waste moving.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. Maureen? Ms. Doyle? As you, as you come up, I will...
I just wanted to point out, Mr. Buxton asked about the 190,000 versus 160. We did discuss it at the joint meeting on May 25th, transfer of 190,000.
Okay. Maureen Doyle, 771 Lebanon Hill. I just wanted to make a comment. We're discussing all these toters and the end of the landfill and all these things, and I want to remind people that there are three Rs in recycling, and we are not doing the other two, reduce and reuse. I'm all for recycling, but try to reduce what you're using. You can contact me, and I'll be happy to tell you ways to reduce and reuse things. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this agenda item number 53? Seeing none. All those in favor? Oppose? One. Six-one, motion carries. Agenda item number 54, vote to the favorable recommendation to appoint, excuse me, appropriate the sum of $200,000 from free cash in supplement of Chapter 90 funds to repair roads.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on this matter? Seeing none. All those in... Counselor Gus?
To the town manager, how much, after we've done all of this stuff, how much do we have left in, in free cash?
Truthfully, I didn't bring that number with me. I would suggest we didn't do the windows in Town Hall. That was about 100,000. I would guess it's somewhere in the neighborhood of 200, but I'd have to check with Karen tomorrow, or Wednesday, to give you a better answer. Somewhere in the neighborhood of 200 to 250 grand, I believe, is left in free cash.
And if we were gonna use it, we would have to use it before the end of June, right?
Correct, correct. Otherwise, it just falls back into free cash next year. It's not a big deal, but you would have to use it quickly if we want to use it, right?
Right. Would it, would it be possible to amend this, then? I don't know if, to, to include, to appropriate the sum of $200,000 plus whatever is left over in free cash to the roads? Can we phrase it that way?
Counselor Clements?
This was a specific project. This was not, this was a specific project, though. We have the DPW director here, perhaps? Mr. Chair?
Yes. This is for the retaining wall.
Yeah, I know, this is the Franklin Terrace.
It's not just repair roads.
I know, but I know, I know this is for Franklin Terrace, but it is, it is generally, it is a general term, so. The way it's phrased, it's general, so we could, we could appropriate for, kinda like the way that, kinda like the way the state had that fund for the Charlton Water Line, where it wasn't specifically phrased, so we could throw it in here for roads and allow it, and use it for something else that's road-related. Because it doesn't specifically say that it's Franklin Terrace.
Let's allow our DPW director to expand.
The, the project that was put on here was for a specific project that actually couldn't be covered in Chapter 90 funds. I am not gonna stand here and tell you that we couldn't use another additional money to help repair roads. I would never, ever do that, but I know that's up to this council. I wouldn't have a specific project that I could say right now that I'd put it towards. I'd have to look at what the sum of the money would be and what, where we would have that fall.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
Counselor Manna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Should this then say specifically if it's for Franklin Terrace? I, it shouldn't just say to repair roads. It should say, because if that money's appropriated for Franklin Terrace, and this says we're voting on to repair roads, then basically, that money can go anywhere, and it was discussed for Franklin Terrace.
That's, that's, we, we can make that amendment in, in the supplement of Chapter 90 month,
of Chapter 90 funds for the construction, or for Franklin Terrace retaining wall repair. Because that's, that's the language that was brought before the general government and capital improvement plan.
Franklin Terrace, why make that motion to vote the favorable recommendation to appropriate the sum of $200,000 from free cash in supplement of Chapter 90 funds to repair Franklin Terrace retaining wall?
Yes.
I make that motion?
I'll second that.
Although, Counselor Claire?
Yeah, I have, sorry. Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Just really quick, going back to the, to the free cash idea that Counselor Steves had just brought up. I mean, is there, like, we have the, we have the road plan, or the, you know, the plan and, you know, priorities and everything. I mean, are there any, are there any projects on there that you can think of off the top of your head towards the top of the list that would, you know, fall in that?
Well, we do have many smaller roads in town that are in really, really bad disrepair that we could target $100,000 for and maybe redo the whole road. I could see, you know, Hill Street's pretty bad. There's some other roads in between, I can't remember the name off the top of my head, but there's one road in between Elm Street and, that are really bad, that could be done with a smaller amount of, of fund like that. It wouldn't be, I wouldn't take on a major road repair project because obviously, $100,000 isn't gonna go very far on Main Street.
Right. Right. My, yeah, I, I was thinking, you know, there are a lot of big, big projects that we have, but if, you know, if there was any possibility to allot some of the leftover free cash money to one of these smaller projects, I'd be in support of that.
Counselor Clements?
Thank you. We keep talking about the potential needs that may come up, and we know that if free cash is not dispersed or appropriated by the end of the month, which is coming up, then it goes back. We don't lose it in the fall time when it's recertified, as it was explained to us. We can then appropriate it for more projects, too. So while roads are in need of repair, I just wonder at this stage of the game whether you could even do much with it because you hadn't planned to do that, or, and then obviously, if we wanted to wait and make sure there were no other needs that would arise for that extra money. I mean, a few hundred thousand dollars left over is not a lot of money.
No, it's not.
And there were things that we didn't do here that we were mindful of, so I don't know if we should do it at this very moment, or wait until we know what else. You talked about looking at, you know, other, another idea, and perhaps this could pony up with that as, as we move forward, but I don't know. Your thoughts on that, Director?
I can say that we have many, many projects already underway between water and sewer and roads this year that taking on trying to design another project for 100,000 would probably put a pretty big burden on my department. So we have many water and sewer projects that are already out to bid and underway, and other major projects that we're trying to get money for in other ways, too, that it could be rail trail and things of that nature, that the list of projects going on in my office right now is quite long.
Any further discussion on this agenda item? Seeing none. All those in favor?
My man, this is for the amendment.
Correct. This is for Counselor Manna's amendment. We have Counselor Steves, second. All those in favor of the amendment? Motion carries. Now, we will read it again to vote. Vote to the favorable recommendation to appropriate the sum of $200,000 from free cash in supplement of Chapter 90 funds to repair Franklin Terrace retaining wall.
So moved.
Second.
Now, we're, this is the correct, so now we're... All those in favor? Seven zero. Motion carries. Agenda number 55, vote the favorable recommendation to appropriate the sum of $225,000 from free cash to replace DPW 1977 Mack Snow slash Plowch Dump Truck with a six-wheel multi-body truck.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on this? Seeing none. All those in favor? Seven zero. Motion carries. Agenda item number 56, vote the favorable recommendation to appropriate the sum of $31,000 from free cash for DPW building repairs to include HVAC study, $10,000, electrical updates, $8,000, real, reallocate emergency power, $8,000, and evaluate and repair outlets, $5,000.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Six-one, motion carries. Agenda number 57, vote the favorable recommendation to appropriate the sum of 20, excuse me, $251,000 from free cash for the design and engineering for Hook, Hamilton, and Central Streets, 25% of design-level support to be ready for TIP, and 25% contingency.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Excuse me. Before we go there, I skip discussion. Any discussion? Counselor McKenzie?
Yes. I may have, maybe this came up in a subcommittee that I was not familiar with, but I had, don't, I haven't seen any understanding plans or, or anything else. I've heard talk of it, but I haven't seen anything, and I'm a little concerned when we're talking about $251,000.
So this is part of the downtown circulation study that's been going on for, oh, prior to me even being here? This study has been happening, which is over five years now. So this was, the engineering was done through, I think, the Downtown Partnership and part of CBDG to cover the circulation study about redesign of Hook and Hamilton and Central Street. There has a concept plan that has been presented previously to this board. This is the next level part of that plan. Our next, we did some safety engineering studies also, and then we proposed it to be placed on the TIP. We have qualified now to be placed in the TIP, which is the transportation information planning. We have to, that would give us federal funding to do this, but in order to get that federal funding, we have to move the design forward. So this would be our preliminary design phase. This covers the engineering for the preliminary design phase.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Counselor Clements?
The overall cost of this project that you expected to sort of run to, and, oh, I, over 10 million. And this is part, there's a little bit more to this, right?
Yes. This is only the preliminary, this is of 25% design-level effort, but this was what he recommended we set aside at this point to get us onto the TIP, and then we can talk about the additional funding that would be needed to complete the plans. It's, it's quite expensive to bring the engineering design level to the level that you need to be able to present to the state and to the federal government as meeting their design standards.
And, but our overall percentage or so of what it ends up costing us?
Oh, it's, it's like less than 10% of the project cost, so.
Right. That's what I'm trying to get to.
Thank you very much.
Counselor DePietro?
Mr. Chair, I'm, I'm getting what is going on. We need to spend money to appropriate money. I got it. But it is my opinion that if we had taken all the money that this town has spent on studies in the last 10 years, we could have replaced Main Street and every building on it five times. I hate to see these. I really do. I, you could explain it to me 10 times, and maybe I still don't get it, but I think it's ridiculous personally.
I, I will, I will say this, this is not study money. This is actual engineering design money. The studies have already been spent. This is moving a study forward to actually be construction plan level and get you the funding for that next level, which we don't want to have to fund the rotary repair and the expanding of the road and the traffic lights and all of that that are coming in as part of this study. We, we want this plan to move forward. This will help our downtown traffic. This will help our safety and our circulation. It addresses the major accident locations in our town, being Hook and Central Street. I think this is really going to modernize our downtown area and make not just Main Street a focal point, but also that, that area. It's long-term. We're not talking the next five years, but we're talking five years hopefully we'll be seeing construction.
Okay. I have Counselor O'Clare.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Just really quick, because Ms. Blakely already kinda said what I was gonna say, is that it, it cuts down on, or it redesigns the, the high-traffic accident areas in that part of town, so it actually, you know, the thought is that it'll make it a lot safer, it'll make traffic a lot better, and, and, you know, we need help in traffic on Main Street. Thank you.
Counselor Steves?
Thank you. Actually, did she, you did just answer one of the questions I was gonna ask, but I was curious, is there any particular reason why the contingency is so high? Because I know contingency is usually around 10% or something like that.
Well, this is because it's, to address the comments that we're going to have, get back from DOT, we really don't know what those comments are gonna be, so that's the level, you know, we're asking him to give us an engineering proposal without really knowing what their comments are gonna be. He wants to get through the public comic period, and that's why the engineering contingency is so high. Because that is what really starts to qualify you to be on that, qualify for the TIP, for the federal money.
So do you have an idea of when this, like, I know that the, the way they do it, they'll have like 25 designed, that 25% in public hearing then, and then like 75% if I'm not mistaken.
Yes.
So do you have an idea when this, this design would get to public hearing?
I, I don't know. I would say probably within the six to nine-month kind of focus. Once he gets the go-ahead, they're going to start going on this, so.
Okay, cool. Thanks.
Counselor McKenzie? Thank you. Any further discussion on this matter? All those in favor? Six, opposed? One. Six one, motion carries. Agenda number 58, vote the favorable recommendation to appropriate the sum of $50,000 from free cash for a firehouse comprehension study to conduct a comprehensive evaluation of the fire station.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Counselor Steve's?
Yeah, one thing I just wanted to clarify, this isn't necessarily an evaluation of the fire station itself, it's an evaluation of the fire sta, current fire station and other, and the general needs, and the general needs for the fire system. It's not just the fire station, and that, that phrasing is a little off, because when we were debating it, the whole point was to make it be, to the needs of whether or not they can find a place for a new fire station.
But it, it is this fire station. It has to, it's not just the needs of the fire department, it's just the station.
Yeah, but it's not just this station, it's the potential of a new station as a whole.
New or current, whatever it may be, right?
Yes, I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay. Any further discussion? Counselor Manna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I thought this was supposed to be a feasibility study. I thought we changed, no, we didn't change, oh, was it, was it feasibility to comprehensive? Oh, okay. I'm confused.
No, you're not, you're not confused, it's just a different name.
Well, it was discussed, so I just want to make sure. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Clemens?
Thanks, and I just want to point out to those watching, keep watching all year, because as this progresses, we did instruct the fire chief to come back to us and to keep us abreast of what's going on in this comprehensive study in terms of locations and needs and what can and cannot be done, and hopefully we have something concrete to offer this community in the short, short term versus long term. We've been talking about this for, since I can remember. So there is a safety concern, health concern, there's all kinds of concerns with what we're doing now, so stay tuned, and we expect to hear from the fire chief as this progresses. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Counselor DePietro?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, we all wasted money on studies. We need a new fire station. We do. Our firefighters working with inadequate facilities, we'll soon be discussing inadequate tools they're working with, to throw $50,000 to go throw a rock and figure out whether we're going to build a new fire station, whether the existing is appropriate. Wasted money, in my opinion.
Mr. Simon Angelo?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to kind of go into that a little bit, with the fire department, first of all, whenever any community does a fire department, these types of studies are done. It's not just a matter of looking to see if you need a fire department a lot, a lot of things go into this. The particular area where the fire station's going to go, what the roads are like, how you can get access and, you know, in and out of the fire department. We have a significant, probably millions of dollars of equipment. The equipment has to fit, it has to be designed in such a way as that all the current equipment we have actually fits into the facility. So it's not just a yes or no kind of thing, it's a very detailed plan as to what the fire station would look like. It's not a general, a specific design, so to speak, but it takes into account all of our current equipment, what our needs are, the size of our fire department, particular locations and their ease of getting in and out of, too. So it is very complex, and this is one of those kind of buildings you only build once in perhaps 100 years, so you want to make sure you get it right. What that will lead to, though, is it will lead to eventually, if the town goes forward, to a very detailed design, looking at what the study says specifically how the building should actually be built according to what the needs are. So it's sort of a, what are the needs we have, and then later on, as we do construction, we'll design the specific needs that were addressed in that study.
Okay.
Could I respond to that, Mr. Chair?
Absolutely.
45,000 square feet, 14-foot-square doors, height and width, because if I can't get out the door, then it's not going to go down the road. Offices, parking, and something fairly flat when you start. There's your 50 grand. Send me a check.
Not quite that easy, but okay.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Oppose? Six one, motion carries. Agenda number 59, vote the favorable recommendation to appropriate the sum of $421,682 from free cash to the, for the purchase of rescue truck for the Southbridge Fire Department.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Counselor DePietro?
Mr. Chair, I did have opportunity in subcommittee and the, was very pleased to meet with some of the firefighters that are actually going to be using this vehicle. It is a tool, it's not a parade truck, and they've certainly sharpened their pencil. It is a jump-in-and-go vehicle that's going to have contingency equipment for crashes, for certainly to support a major fire like we've experienced several of in the last year or so. Not a frills item, and I would recommend to council across the board that we pass this unanimously.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
I would like to just go on record, because I was not able to make it to that general government subcommittee due to a family commitment, but I, I understand the need of our fire department. I understand that the fire department needs a new truck. I just don't think spending $421,000 on a truck is necessary. My thought process, I said it at the subcommittee meeting, was let's get a smaller, cheaper vehicle, and let's equip it with brand-new, state-of-the-art equipment, because we were told as counselors that they're going to come back next year to buy equipment for this truck. We are taking the old recycled equipment that we have now, and we're putting it into a truck. I would rather see our money spent a little different, not saying that they don't need a truck. I know they need a truck, and I'm willing to vote for a truck, but not spending $420,000 for a truck. I'd rather see a smaller vehicle with brand-new equipment placed in it where, brand-new jaws of life, brand-new, and I, and I understand that they came back and they cut some of the equipment out of it, they took out some of the stuff out of it, but again, I just, I can't see myself supporting an empty shell rather than take the whole $420,000, we're giving you a check of $420,000, spend 300 on a truck and spend 120,000 on brand-new equipment, whatever equipment you need. That I would support. That's something that I would support, but I just, again, I wasn't able to be there, so that's my two cents.
Counselor Manna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you. If Mr. DeFranzo could come up and actually tell us how he's equipping the truck and with what equipment, so the community knows. I mean, they don't think it's just the empty shell, because I believe there is some fairly new and decent equipment that is going on there, something that you use.
Yeah. Again, thank you all for considering this truck. It's been a long time coming for the department to get this truck. We took a hard look at what we could do, what we couldn't do, and the officers of the department really took a, you know, a difficult task to decide what we can use and what we can't use. The truck does come with a brand-new light tower. The one we currently have is over 20 years of age, sits on the older truck, Rescue One, so we would get a brand-new light tower, a brand-new generator. The one that's on Rescue One is an old civil defense generating power unit, which has some issues right now that we're trying to get repaired, so we really don't have a system right now, so this will come with a brand-new system. The other piece is a fire extinguishing system, and we still haven't really determined what would be best for our community yet, which one we want to go with. The officers are still debating what would be applicable, but it would come with a fire extinguishing system. We'd like to go with a foam-based type system so that we could handle all the different types of new fuels that are out there. I'm sure most people have heard of ethanol. Ethanol, you really can't use water on an ethanol-type fire, it spreads it very dramatically, so a foam system would help us in those particular instances, so that's really what we're looking for. This truck has extra storage ability that we don't have currently on our Rescue Two, which is the small truck, the Dodge that we have. We have had in the past fuel oil spills that have entered the river. This truck will allow us to carry all of our booms and pads and deploy them quickly so that we don't have a larger ecological problem. So the truck does come with quite a few things that we can use and space that we can put better equipment on and be ready for. One of the other things that some of the counselors were told and witnessed themselves is we have some equipment that sits on the floor right now, the firehouse, because we don't have a vehicle big enough to put it on. So the hope is that we can put the Rescue Alive sled that we have for ice rescue on the truck so that it is available to go immediately versus us putting it in a pickup truck and getting it to the emergency scene. So those are some of the goals and objectives that we're trying to get together with this truck.
Thank you.
Counselor? McKenzie?
Yes, I was actually at that second subcommittee where this truck was discussed, and after everything was explained in depth, I came to the realization that, yeah, it's, it's a lot of money. It's a lot of money, but safety of the people in Southbridge is far more important than saving $200,000 on a truck.
I'm not saying that. Counselor McKenzie, I'm not saying?
No, no, I know, but I'm saying that if we got a smaller truck, it would actually be cheaper, and I respect you, sir, and I respect your point, but I, I'm also saying that it's extremely, extremely important that we do buy this truck and that we look to put safety of the lives of people in Southbridge first. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor O'Clair?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you. To the fire chief question, the, you said that you would like to equip it with the foam-type extinguishers, is that included in this, in this pricing?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And I've also, like, I've been, I've been approached by several citizens and also one or two people from the firehouse, and they had the same, they had the same reservations as Counselor Carrasco about the, about the equipment versus the, the truck, and I just, I'm curious, because I didn't hear these questions until after that subcommittee meeting, what are, what are the station's needs for equipment and how, you know, how, how much of a priority is that going to be in years going forward, and how, where do you stand now?
We have a lot of needs, and then there are also a lot of wants, and it's my job to differentiate between needs and wants. One of the needs that we have will be in the future is to do a real hard look at extrication equipment. We haven't spent any time as a group to look and understand all of the new technology that is available to us. There's battery-operated equipment that wasn't available 10 years ago, well, it's now available, and battery technology has come a long way. Whether that fits for our community, we have no idea. We haven't spent any time to do the research on that, and before we ask for money, I think it's only prudent that we do our homework and be prepared to give you a good proposal when we get that far. The staff would be more than excited to do a whole study on what equipment, as far as extrication goes, should we go with, because there's a lot of different manufacturers and a lot of different methods and pieces that we could use, but we haven't spent any time on that. We focused a lot on the truck and what we could do for now, until we can spend more time to get you what you need for information.
Thank you. That answers most of my question. I guess the other part of my question that I was hoping that you could answer, are there, is there equipment now that's, that's insufficient for the needs of the community that needs replacing or will need replacing in the next, you know, two to five years?
Well, again, while we have the standard of NFPA, I, I don't always subscribe to that, because I think sometimes it's a very big financial burden on communities. We have our Engine Two, which is a 1989. If we were to go by the NFPA standard, that should have been replaced in 2009. I, I don't subscribe to that. I, I think 30 years for a community of our size is, is more than acceptable, so that truck is probably going to, I'm going to start to look to replace that truck in 2019, so that's a couple of years away. Our ladder truck is certainly a very antiquated piece of equipment, but until we get a fire station built, we can't replace that truck, because we can't buy a new one to fit the firehouse. So there are certainly some items that that needs to be replaced, and most of our other really big needs is the fire station itself and the things that go in a firehouse. The staff deserves better showers, the staff deserves better training areas, the staff deserves better, you know, quarters for just a space to go and kind of collect their thoughts and get ready for the next call. We don't have a lot of that right now, so the fire station is a really huge issue for us, and that's why I am thankful that you voted the 50,000 to see if we can put a plan together and get you a number on what it's going to cost to build a fire station, because that's really what you need. If you don't know what it's going to cost to build a fire station, you can't make a good decision, so that's what this 50,000 will go towards, is to get you a number. Like Counselor Clement said, we want to get a number for you for next year, so that hopefully gets on the ballot for next year as a question for people to decide what they want us to do.
Thank you, thank you for that, and yeah, I, I completely agree. You've, you all need a new fire station, and I hope that we're able to do that in the coming years. But just back to the, back to the fire truck issue, just for a moment, I guess I'm trying to gauge the needs of the station in a way that, you know, there might not be $400,000 to give to the fire department next year, the year after.
Sure.
So is this, is this a good way to spend that money, taking, taking the needs of the fire station into account for the next years if there's, you know, less, less of a cash flow coming in from this side? Are there pieces of equipment, you know, on the trucks now, or, or that you're using to go out on calls, that, you know, maybe a smaller truck but fully equipped with, you know, the equipment that you might need over the next few years would be a more prudent solution for yourselves to do the job effectively for the community? I guess is what I'm getting at.
Sure. I think in my eight years of the administration, I don't think one project that we brought forward wasn't something we really needed. And I know my five years as the fire chief, I don't bring things that I don't need for that department. There are a lot of wants that some of the staff has, and one of them, and you seem to want to allude to it, so I'll just put it out on the table, powered stretchers, which some of the staff say that they want to help prevent back injuries and that type of thing. We haven't done a lot of homework on those, but I can tell you, the, the last ambulance that we purchased, we prepped the truck to start preparing for that stretcher system, because we think at some point it would be cost-effective for us to do that, but it was, it's an expensive proposition to start getting yourself into, and for us, again, not doing our homework and understanding all of the pros and cons of going with a powered stretchered system, because they are heavier, they're a little more cumbersome to manipulate through people's homes, is that really what we want to do? There's just a lot of homework that has to be done before we make that type of a decision. But when we bought the new ambulance, we did prep it for going forward with different stretcher systems should we decide to bring that forward to you for consideration.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Counselor Clemens?
Thanks. So I like Counselor Carrasco, in the first pass at this information was very much set against spending this kind of money on a, quote, "heavy-duty rescue truck." There was much conversation in the community, there was much conversation amongst the firehouse, there was much conversation all over the place, and I was certainly on the mindset of, there's no way we should spend this kind of money on one vehicle. We took it off the table. We didn't bring it forward, and it didn't look like it was going to be positively received. However, at that meeting and then beyond that, many more people came on board, and I've often said to you, communication is key, and I felt that there was a strong lack of communication amongst the ranks who would be using this piece of equipment and the needs of this community. So apparently, something happened at that firehouse, and a lot of people got involved with what was really being requested, was then approached to bring it back to general government. By the way, we have it on video, feel free to watch the reruns, it's been playing, it was playing, and you came back with more information, more usage. You sharpened your pencil a bit, you took off some things. There was the need and the want in the air cascade system, which was a big, it was $30,000, and continually pushed that, that envelope as to whether that was a need or a want. And I asked you specifically, you know, whether or not we would be in a crisis situation if we didn't have that, and you said no. Much to Counselor Claire's question about equipment, and I'm all for the new, lightweight, easier to use, easier to, to manipulate, for, for protection of our community, but again, we asked, is there anything that we're using right now that we, is an imminent issue for the local community, that, you know, we may want to replace something because it's lighter, more efficient, whatever, but can we save the people? Can we do what we need to do with the equipment we have? I think is, is a lot of what you were asking, and we kind of brought that up at the meeting, because I'm all about maximizing what we've got.
Sure.
And, and not wasting money for the community. I wanted to take that $450,000 and put it to the firehouse, right? There's our half million to start the construction. And yet here I sit, supporting this fire truck now, because of the work that was done by Because of the work that was done by many people who were against the purchase of this fire truck. Came forward and actually worked together to decide what the community really needed. And when you worked with your men and with everybody else involved, you came back, even a prepayment option. Imagine that, prepay and save $9,000. Who would have thought? But that's something that you all looked at and reduced that price over $40,000. Which isn't a lot, but it's something, and I respect the effort that went into it. And while I didn't, I wasn't excited about the union letter you brought the first time around, which was not specific and just said they wanted a truck, they didn't specify the truck you had proposed. Again, moving forward with communication and the right, the right information. I believe you had a lot more support inside and outside on that, on, on, on all levels. And again, we have that on, in the minutes, we have that on video for people to watch that meeting. Which was, which was well-attended by many, many members of the fire department, even though some were being called up that evening for, for duty. So if, again, I ask Counselor O'Clare's question. Are we in any imminent, you know, are there, is there anything that we need more than this at the moment?
I need a fire station. That's really what I need. I mean, that's, that's the priority right now. But we need, we need a truck, too. Unfortunately, there's just so many things we need. I'm dealing with a 1977 truck and a 1983 truck.
And you need to be realistic, as was said. Your chances of you-
Yep.
-getting another truck in the next year, two or three is kind of a-
It's pretty slim.
I would suggest you keep your maintenance up.
Exactly.
Because if you're gonna get a firehouse, you can't get everything.
And GPW does a phenomenal job for us and the many vendors that we use to keep our trucks in top condition. We will continue to do that. But, you know, a 1977 truck, the truck is 40 years of age. I think the truck has done its time for us. And the 1983 truck, it's 34 years of age. I, I don't know of anybody that drives a vehicle every day just to go back and forth to work that's that old. How do we expect these guys to work as a public safety group and a professional team to run vehicles 30, 40 years of age? I think it's time to be replaced.
Well, I appreciate your time this evening and, and all the time that was put into the first meeting, which went for hours, the second meeting, and, and the research that you brought back. And it is a medium-duty truck. It is not a heavy-duty truck.
Correct.
You brought examples of that to the meeting, talked about cost of the $800 to $1 million on a heavy-duty truck. This is a medium-duty truck. And, and it met the parameters to fit into our station and to be safe and-
And I just, I agree with you.
Serve the needs of this community.
The staff did a great job of trying to figure out where we could make this work for everybody.
Right. And I know they researched alternatives, which was one of the things I kept bringing up. Second, second-hand vehicles, different types of things. And I know that was all research. So in the end, it was more of a consensus. So thank you for the work you all did.
Thank you. Counselor O'Clare.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a quick statement to the, to the Fire Chief. You probably don't need to answer and go back up to the podium or anything. But I, I think everybody up here wants you to have a new truck. I think everybody up here wants to allot this money to the fire department so that you can, you know, take care of the needs of the community, because you all do so much on a day-to-day basis. I think we're just, you know, some of us are just concerned that the money may be allotted, you know, a little bit more wisely, you know, by buying more than just one thing. And, and I'm gonna take your word for it, you know, I'm gonna take your word for it that this is the need of the, of the fire department and defer to you on that. So, thank you.
Any further discussion on this agenda item? All those in favor? Six, one opposed. Motion carries. Agenda number 60, vote the favorable recommendation to appropriate the sum of $300,000 from free cash to purchase Chromebooks and additional capital funds for the Southbridge Public Schools.
So moved.
Counselor Manah.
Thank you. You were gonna say discussion, weren't you?
I was.
Okay, here's another agenda item that makes it look like this $300,000 is going strictly for Chromebooks. I mean, it says additional capital funds. And we see it in our, in our, I really think that we should be a little bit more clear when we're appropriating large sums of money like that. I would hate to see this money, you know, we're, we're voting on Chromebooks and additional capital funds. Well, what are the additional capital funds? I mean, we should know if that, I, I get it, but it's not here on the agenda, and that's what we're voting on.
If you want to make the amendment and make it, the list, the exact, to include the $15,000 of band equipment, you can, and the curriculum technology of $148,000-
I would like to make that motion, because I believe that's what we should, we should be voting on.
Mr. Tom Manager.
Just before we get on that mo, go before in that motion, just to let you know the purpose for this. The business, school business manager and the superintendent of time, the reason they didn't want it specified is because once you lock it in, they can't have any flexibility or any movement as they went along. Sometimes they find things coming a little less or a little more, and they have to shift money around to buy different capital items. And they were hoping that you guys would trust them or feel comfortable enough with them to give them a little bit of flexibility between the items. But obviously, you can define it out if you want, but that would take away any flexibility they might have in moving that money around.
Mr. Chair, if I may? I, I don't know. So you want us to trust them, okay? I would love to trust anybody. However, we've seen things happen in the school before, money being appropriated, where it shouldn't be appropriated, bills being said that they're gonna get paid and bills not getting paid, right? So why don't we vote on what we discussed, okay? And if they need to move the money, then they come back to us and ask us to move the money. It's plain and simple. I mean, I would rather do things more transparent than trusting someone to spend $300,000 the way they say, oh, well, I mean, we might need it for something else. I, I, that's not, that's not good business. Thank you.
Counselor Steve.
I was gonna say something very similar, actually, for two points. One is that, at this point, we don't even really know what the school administration looks like right now. That's part of the problem. I'm a little concerned about that. And also, I'd like to point out that the way the question is specifically worded, it says, "to purchase Chromebooks," but the, the agenda item in the, in the capital list says Chromebook lease, first of all. We're leasing Chromebooks. We're not buying them.
Also, part of the $148,000 in technology is to purchase Chromebooks.
It is. So we're purchasing them and leasing them.
Yes, because it's part of the payment of the first load. And then part of the technology budget, that they gave us about 20 pages of items-
Yeah, I've never seen that list.
From markers to-
I'd like to amend, I'd like to make a motion to amend this agenda item to read, vote the favorable recommendation to appropriate the sum of $300,000 from free cash for the per, to, for the purchase, for the school purchase to include band equipment, $15,000, curriculum materials, $15,417.50, technology, $148,345, sorry, my eyes are dry, three, excuse me, 343. And Chromebook lease, $121,239, $239.50.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the amended, amended motion?
Of the amendment.
Of the amended, yes. Seven zero. Now to approve the motion. All those in favor, as amended?
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Just a question, again, probably out of inexperience. Who's to follow up on these expenditures that they went, where this council just voted specifically?
They have to go through the finance office, so the finance office, Karen Hornacek.
To the panel.
Signs, signs, all the purchase orders and the sign, you know, they, so they do work, they work together with our finance department. And that's how we know if things are not spent, so they either have to come back or give it back.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Not a problem. Counselor Manah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, could you please read the motion as amended, so it's on record? To vote on?
Vote the favorable recommendation to appropriate the sum of $300,000 from free cash to purchase band equipment, $15,000, curriculum materials, $15,417.50, technology, $148,343,000, Chromebook lease, $121,239.50, for a total of $300,000.
Second.
It's, and we didn't need that again, but it's already been- All those in favor? Seven zero. Motion carries. Thank you. Agenda item number 61, vote the favorable recommendation to appropriate $20,794 from free cash to purchase a new cross-match L-Scan, 100, excuse me, 1,000 PX machine for the Southbridge Police Department.
$10,000 PX.
It's 1,000.
It's one, oh, I thought you said 100,000.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Seven zero. Motion carries. Agenda 62, vote the favorable recommendation to appropriate the sum of $40,000 from free cash to purchase a new police cruiser, Ford Police Interceptor, to replace 2005 Crown Victoria.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Seven zero. Motion carries. Agenda item number 63, vote the favorable recommendation to appropriate the sum of $195,425 for free cash for upgrades to the Central Street parking lot.
So moved.
Second.
Do we want a list? No, or specific? Discussion? None? All those in favor? Oppose? Six, one. Motion carries. Vote the favorable recommendation to appropriate the sum of $60,000 from free cash for updating the zoning district and bylaws.
So moved.
Discussion? Counselor Mackenzie.
Yes, I'm not understanding this zoning district and bylaws. I just don't understand it. Could somebody explain this to me?
Our Economic Development Director, Rosemary.
So the zoning bylaw was established probably in the 1940s sometime. There was a period of time, that was probably around when many communities started establishing their zoning bylaw. It's a little bit deceiving to call it just a bylaw. What it does is it looks at every single parcel in the community, and it lays out all of the regulations, all of the uses that are allowed in every single parcel, all of the dimensional requirements, the types of permitting that would be required for each use. So it's a pretty substantial document, and it can make a really big difference in how your community ultimately looks, especially as new development occurs. It also lays out where those districts are.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you. Counselor O'Clare.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to Rosemary. I, we've done a lot of, instead of, you know, spot zone changing with certain parcels, you know, over the past year, I think there's been at least two, probably three zoning changes that we've done. Are those also gonna be looked at as, in more of like an umbrella kind of treetop level to-
Yes. And I'm glad you brought that up, because there has been a lot of that. I mean, spot zoning is an actual term, and it's actually illegal. But some of, I think, of what we've done over the years could be loosely called that. So this is a holistic way of looking at the uses and dimensional regulations throughout our whole community. And one of the problems that we're having right now is that as properties are either abandoned or demolished, and we're trying to sell things to maybe auction properties off, because the dimensional regulations are such that some of them just don't make sense. And so if you were to look at those dimensional regulations, there could, there could be no redevelopment on many of our parcels. So we need to have it be more flexible in places.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of agenda number 64? Oppose? One, six, one. Agenda item number 65, vote the favorable recommendation to appropriate the sum of $20,000 from free cash for a street scrap, re, scape, excuse me, rebranding, rebranding of Southbridge in the downtown core.
So moved. Second.
Discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, this is for what we discussed a few months ago in regards to the colors and signage and everything. How much more is this gonna cost us down there?
Through you, Mr. Chair.
Yes?
So that, the, the study that was done said that this would be a good amount to give a real good start to doing a lot of the signs in the downtown area. But we haven't specked out exactly each sign yet, so I think this will hit the majority of them. But we could potentially look for future funds if they're available to finish up the project.
What approximately?
This was the only amount given to us, Rosemary. Do you know of any additional amounts? This was what they thought was a fair recommendation. This is what the study recommended. But I don't think they got into future, you know, what costs are.
No, they did. But the consultant that provided us with the high-level designs and took us through the whole exercise of doing the branding can help us with that. You know, he realizes that communities don't have a lot of money. So he just kind of guided us through how much would give us, I mean, it wouldn't make sense to spend a certain amount of money if it wasn't even noticeable. So he felt that $20,000 would be a good first start to have a presence and a beginning of the rebranding. And then from there, he said what a lot of communities do is they do a fundraiser, and they try to have kind of public-private partnership and, for the next phase.
See, that concerns me because of the issues that we're going to be facing. I mean, I heard a lot of people up here tonight talk about wanting to save our town money and the possibility of the closure of the landfill and no longer getting funds from the landfill. I mean, that's, if that really does happen, that's a huge loss to our community. I mean, I would hate to start something and not be able to finish it, because there you go. It's just another study on a shelf, basically, something that, you know, that's happened in our community for long, you know, many times. So this does concern me.
Counselor Steve.
Rosemary, I was curious, how would this tie into the, or how might this change if we, if we go through that, the rezoning process? Would it, would it have any effect on that at all?
That wouldn't change at all. This is about kind of the character, this is about the character of the town. It's a, it kind of laid out, so the exercise laid out what the signs would look like, what the graphics would look like, but also benches, you know, different kinds of streetscape. And so the first phase is getting some presence of signs, but it doesn't tie into zoning at all.
Does it, does this include any kinds of like, actually going out and advertising and marketing the community as a whole?
No, it does not. No.
Do you have any idea what, because presumably, obviously, if we're gonna try to do, talk about some, some, you know, branding our community, obviously, we need to do some of that. What, any idea what that would cost?
What, marketing our town?
The idea of marketing the community and getting, getting the name out and trying to, trying to change the picture. Because that's one of the issues. You talk to people outside the community, unfortunately, and they, they seem to have a somewhat negative view of our town, which is not deserved. And how to, to correct that, obviously, we need to get people aware of what's actually, our community actually has. And I realize that this is part of, part of that. But that'll be, that, but to see it, you have to come to the community to see it. As opposed to reaching out to the rest of the world and saying, this is what we have come to us. If you understand what I'm saying.
So your question is, how much would marketing cost?
So if we were to, if we were to do this, obviously, that would seem to be a first phase and a serious, it would obviously logically tie into a much broader community marketing program of some sort.
I, I don't know. I haven't looked into the cost of that. I mean, the first thing you need to do is create an atmosphere that is attractive and pleasing for visitors to come in and for businesses to want to be in our downtown. So this is kind of the first step. That's, this is sort of laying the groundwork for that. So you, you want to have something as good as possible to market. So doing this starts to make it, make people aware of, you know, kind of what the brand of the community is. But I have not looked into the cost of, of marketing the community, per se. I do do marketing through a lot of different venues now, just through networking and working with the chamber and that kind of thing.
Okay. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? I'm just going to say, I don't see rebranding Southbridge as a major, major item here, especially in our downtown core. I think I wasn't sold in the beginning of it, and I'm still not sold. So I, again, this is money that I think we should reconsider and spend in a different way, but that's just my two cents. Any further discussion? Counselor Steves.
I was actually thinking something along the same lines there, Mr. Chairman, because I, I like, the designs that you made were actually kind of neat-looking. I didn't, I didn't really care whether or not, whether the whole red, the red-white versus the, the color scheme that you picked was, didn't matter to me one way or the other. But, you know, I, with so many other stuff, other things going on, I mean, I'm inclined to agree with what the chairman just said, so.
Any other discussion? Counselor Clements.
Well, I know, oh, there's a lot going on, but we brought this up at Subcommittee PND, and there was the committee that worked on this that came in also, right?
Right, that worked, it was all part of the economic development plan. It's one of the things that came out of that.
And we pretty much agreed at that point to bring it forward and, and support the group who had spent the past year taking care of it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion does not carry. Agenda item sixty-six, vote the favorable recommendation to appropriate the sum of thirteen thousand, five hundred from free cash for window replacement at the airport diner, replacement of the heating and air conditioning unit.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous, seven, zero. Motion carries. Agenda item sixty-seven, vote the favorable recommendation to appropriate the sum of thirty-one thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars from free cash for the repair of the airport hangar to include paint, seven thousand, two hundred and fifty, clean and reseal roof, five thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars, install two propane heaters, five thousand, eight hundred dollars, and connect water and sewer, thirteen thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous by all present, seven, zero. Sixty-eight, vote the favorable recommendation to appropriate the sum of twenty-five thousand dollars from free cash for anti-drug education to educate the community against drug use.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Counselor Steves.
Yeah, tying this into what you, what you said earlier about the sign, the banners and stuff that went up, that seems to be kind of what you were talking about doing with this money. So how do you see using this money to build on what's already out there?
So if, I think, actually, I think you went to the meeting, so we talked a lot about that. We actually are working with this person from the State Department of Health and Addiction Services, who is, I told you, is going to come in and help us work and develop a plan. They've already assigned to us a technical coordinator that's been working with our deputy chief. The committee is going to, as a whole, work with that person to develop a plan and move forward in how we would best utilize this money to get as much value from as, as we can. The signs were a couple of hundred bucks that we were able to get up. The police department actually gave us that money out of their budget, but it could be that type of use. It could be advertisement, it could be brochures, it could be, we talked about a billboard. There's all kinds of things that are going to be put into the mix, but we really want to see what the state has to say because the state are the real experts in this area. We want to make sure that the recommendations are things that they believe would give us the most value for the money. So, so I can't give you a specific answer until the state works with us to develop that plan, but that's already in motion and moving forward.
When do you meet next?
When do we meet next?
Yeah.
We meet once a month. It's a Thursday. I don't know if Jose has already set the designation for that, and I'd be happy to see to it you're invited to that meeting as well. There actually is a, just saying, he actually sent me an email today to invite me to a, a regional conference with regard to the problem of opioids and how different towns are reaching out. It's in Worcester. He just sent me that invitation today. I'd be happy to forward that to you as well, if you'd like to join us, but it's a whole educational meeting on how different towns are addressing this issue.
Okay, thanks.
Counselor Manna.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you. In the beginning, I was against this whole twenty-five thousand dollars. However, after talking and stuff, I would like to see, you know, if this passes targeted towards the youth and educating them.
I'm sorry.
Targeting the youth and educating them. And I will say that I wish there were a plan set in place for twenty-five thousand dollars instead of one not set in place. You know, I mean, there should have been a plan set in place first, and then you should have came to us and said, we want twenty-five thousand dollars, and here's the plan, and presented us with the plan. So now here we are, we're going to be voting on twenty-five thousand dollars and there's no plan. So, but, I mean, targeting the youth, and I, I think that's, that's the key, educating the youth and targeting the youth.
To respond, thank you. And I think it's a very good point, and frankly, I'm, I'm all there with you in terms of educating our youth, because if we can keep people from ever trying drugs, we don't have to deal with the treatment on the other side. So I totally agree with you. As a committee, we actually started developing some of our own plans and we passed it by the committee. We were looking at putting up a billboard in the center of town. We talked about bringing in speakers into the school system. We talked about, we're actually going to develop a television commercial with public access, which will be developed for free. We're working with the hospital already and our police and ambulance corps, and actually working with the local theater to, to develop that TV commercial. So we had ideas of our own that we were going to bring forward and use of that money, but after discussion actually with councilors and through the committee, they would have liked, they, they said that we would like to make sure you use that money in the best way possible. And when we were working with the state to bring in the state, they advised us, they work with a lot of different communities, in that they want us to look at what other unit, communities have done that actually demonstrate there's been a result of that money. So, you know, the state, I think, is going to build on the plans that we already have sort of in place to make sure that, again, too many people, I guess, from the state's point of view, are throwing money at the problem without definitive plans, without real action and real results. So I think I agree to, when we talked about it in Subcommittee, I agree that I would bring back the plan, the final plan, before we spend any money to the Subcommittee, just so everybody can see what it is. I mean, it'll be developed by the state with the Drug Task Force, but I, I do think it's important you guys understand why the plan was developed and what was developed, so I'll bring it forward, just so you, you can take a look at it, okay?
Okay, and just, you know, I have not been able to make any of these meetings because it's during the day, and there's days that I do work out of town.
I know.
There's some days that are very flexible, so if I could get that email or something, or just a reminder, hey, there's going to be a meeting maybe on Tuesday at three o'clock in the afternoon.
Frankly, if you would like, I will put the whole council on that list, and if anybody wants to show up, I'd love to have you guys.
Well, that's up to you. I'm asking, I mean, that'd be nice, I'm asking for me, so, I mean, I can't speak for the rest of the council.
Be more than happy to, in the future, I'll, I'll have Jose add all the councilors into that list, and anyone who would like to come, we would welcome you, because this is a huge issue, so any input by councilors would be, would be important and we would enjoy it. I know a couple of you have been there, and I'd love to see more of you.
Okay, so Deputy Chief Dinghy is the?
He's the chairman of the committee.
He's the chairman, okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
I have a growing list here. Counselor O'Clare.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you. Just to kind of echo that sentiment that there is no plan before we're spending the twenty-five thousand, is there, is there any way for those of us who can't, you know, attend a meeting in the middle of the day to, for you, maybe Ron, to, to bring it to a Subcommittee, either PPP or General Government or something, to, you know, update us and let us know what's going on? I mean, I, like, I want, if, if we're appropriating twenty-five thousand dollars, I want it to go to hands-on programming for the youth of our community, things of that nature. You know, twenty-five thousand dollars on, you know, billboards and signs, like, you know, billboards and signs don't stop kids from starting to use drugs, you know, hands-on programming, real-life experiences, things that they take with them and actually retain are the things that are, that are going to make the difference. And so I just want to make sure that we're using that money wisely and, and for the children of our community.
First, I'd be happy to bring it to the committee for your review and for you guys to take a look at it. Now, truthfully, I think we all would have our own opinions as to how to get the best bang for that, that money. Frankly, I'm, while I, I feel like I've dealt with this issue for many years, I'm not an expert in this area. That's frankly, one of the things we're looking at the state for, is their expertise, because they have dealt with this issue directly. So what I might think might have value may be significantly different than what they actually see has value. So I'm not going to lie to you, we're going to lean heavily on them to give us that advice because they're, they're professionals. So that probably, at the end of the day, it's going to be mostly their, their plan with our thought process as to local input to what we see as the particular drug problem here in town.
Thank you. All right, thank you. That's all.
Counselor Steves.
One thing, just to clarify, because I, I think I know the answer to this question, not, just to clarify for the people out there, none of this money, none of this twenty-five grand is actually going toward actually studying. They're, they're helping us, they're helping with us, this, this money is going to actually go to programming after the study is done.
So, so that was, it's an interesting point to make because one of the things that they talked about and they brought before us is that other towns have actually developed this big plan. As part of the plan, they've spent money into getting information. I think, like you guys, I was like, no, I don't want to use the money to develop any planning part of it, I'd rather use the money for implementation. So as far as my leadership goes, as part of the committee, it would be to press down that same path. Let's do the planning ourself, let's try to do the information and gather it ourselves. We have some real particularly good assets here in town. One is Harrington Hospital is a huge asset. Our school system is another huge asset in getting information. We have Spectrum Services, we have a lot of those people on our committee, so we want to draw on their expertise for information because the state looks for that information as part of how we develop the plan. So instead of paying somebody to do that stuff, I'm hoping we can get the hospital to, for instance, the hospital might get overdoses, but we need, without them telling us what patients had overdoses, to keep information for us in such a way as that we can use it without disclosing any names or information. So I think we have the experts here in those significant areas that can keep us from having to go out and spend money for planning, so I would be, like you, opposed to that.
That's what I'm hoping. And also, I was thinking to dovetail a little bit with what Counselor Claire mentioned a few minutes ago. One of the things I think that when we do this, when we finally ask what this plan is, I definitely want to see it be something that gets people involved in the community because I think one of the issues that people get so desperate to be using opiates in the first place, besides the fact that they, that they end up having to, they end up getting hooked on drugs, you know, for painkillers, because they went to hospitals and they didn't, you know, had an issue there, but, but the addictions often are tied into economic problems and, and the fact that they basically don't feel like they fit into the community and have nothing, nothing to lean back on. So if we can give them something to make them feel like they fit in and, and participate in, whether it be the arts or some other sort of community function or whatever, outdoorsy things, that kind of stuff, we need to do that kind of stuff. Just my thought there. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor DePietro.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. All due respect to the councilors, and certainly a good question, where is the money going specifically? And you'll probably never hear me say this again, sitting in this chair, this is one agenda item where if the town manager doesn't have a war chest to work with, he doesn't know what direction to go, because there's so many. If twenty-five thousand dollars is a magic number to get it rolling, so be it, and let's see how far we get with that. But certainly, certainly, it just causes shame on us if we don't pursue it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor McKenzie.
Yes, I was actually at that, that meeting with Deputy Chief Jose Dinghy and our town manager, and there were a number of other people that were there, but the gentleman who came, I'm going to be honest with you, I forgot his name.
Spectrum. He's the director of Spectrum.
The director of Spectrum, there you go.
No, 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 I'm sorry, no, the, the person he's specifically talking about was a state official. He was actually the director of the State Department of Health and Addiction Services. He was the lead person in that, in that government body.
Got it. I, I was extremely, extremely impressed with his presentation, the amount of knowledge, because we were kind of doing a little bit of brainstorming there within a small group, and he just led us in a very positive and a very direct way, and it was, I thought it was excellent. And I would, I would encourage, as a number of the councilors had said, they wanted to come to the meeting, I would definitely encourage you, if you can make a meeting, come, he will, he's going to come back, and he's going to be helping us and guiding us. We'll be making the decisions, but what a leader this guy is and how knowledgeable he was, it was great. So, thank you. It's not going to be just a, you know, throwing twenty-five dollars in, in some kind of a program. It's going to be, it's going to be a very, very good and strong program. And for twenty-five thousand dollars, you're not going to get much anyway, to be honest with you. It's not going to go very far, but it's a start, and it's, and it's going to be a great start. Thank you.
Counselor Manna.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you. I, I just want to say this, you just can't give twenty-five thousand dollars and say, do what you want with it. You need to have a plan. That's just like, oh, giving my, my seventeen-year-old daughter, you know, twenty-five thousand dollars and say, put it towards your college education. Yeah, right, Mom, you have to do it for her. You have to make sure. So I, I, you know, I, I agree that this, you know, it's needed, the education, targeting our youth with that and all, but I don't agree with some of the comments up here saying that twenty-five thousand dollars, do what you want, you know, without the plan. I, I just had a problem with that. Thank you.
Counselor McKenzie.
Okay, I think that, and I respect what Counselor Manna said, but I, I must say that what we're really doing is we're appropriating money and then we're going to devise a plan. We're not going to be spending the money until we devise the plan and the direction, and the councilors can have an, an input in that planning process by attending the meetings. So it's not going to be like, here, go do what you want. It's going to be a, a, we're going to work out a plan together with professionals and councilors and many of other groups in our, in our, in our town. So I think that it's, I think it's, all we're doing is appropriating the money for now and then we're going to spend it after we make up our, our plan. Thank you.
Any, Counselor Clements.
With all due respect, this is about appropriating the money. We've been through this ad nauseam in, in Subcommittee. If we had this much issue with it, we should have brought it back to Subcommittee and asked for the plan before it came on to this agenda item. So I'm asking us to just refrain now and move forward with this without moving the question. How about we just take the vote?
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous, seven, zero. Agenda item sixty-nine.
Discussion of the next meeting date, Monday, July tenth, two thousand and seventeen, seven PM here in council chambers. That is the reorganizational meeting where you'll get to meet our new council members, will be sworn in, and hope to see you all here.
We do have a special town council meeting on June twenty-eighth for the town manager's evaluation.
Seven PM?
Seven PM. Agenda item number seventy, vote to enter into executive session according to Mass. General Laws, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One-A, discuss strategy with respect to litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on government's litigation position and if the chair so declares, return to open forum to vote and adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Steves.
Yeah.
Counselor O'Clare.
Yes.
Counselor Carrasco.
Yes.
Counselor Clements.
Yes.
Counselor DePietro.
Yes.
Counselor McKenzie.
Yes.
Counselor Miana.
Yes.
Seven yes.
Thank you. We shall be back. Good evening. We're back from executive session. At this time, we'll take a roll call, please.
Present.
Counselor Carrasco.